But it was nice because the sets, it was really, it was a half hour between like one set and come plate, but the kids were right before. Yeah, I had a Hall and Al pineapple, which is my favorite.
Was that before, before or after you had?
Well, it was breakfast and lunch and out in the water.
I'm not sure if you see.
Okay, I have it now.
You do.
Okay, Planning Commission meeting for August first, 2022 is called to order. Could we get the roll call, please?
Member Gold.
I am here.
Member Jamison.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Chair Williams.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
Scott, would you lead us, please?
Sure. Place your right hand over your heart, let's begin.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, does anybody want to make any changes to the agenda, the order? Or leave it as is? Seeing none, do we need a motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. In this section, anybody can, in the public, can speak on issues or items that are not on the agenda. And each person will be allowed 30 seconds. I have one, 30 minutes, three minutes. Well, 30 seconds, whatever. It's got a three in it. And I have one speaker slip from Michael Miller.
Hi, thank you, Michael Allen Miller. And I'll begin. I don't have any information prepared, I just thought of this because I knew that there was a planning commission coming up, and it's related to maybe a seawater treatment facility, desalinization planned or what have you. I just came back from Santa Barbara and the grasses there are brown, it hasn't rained very much since I've been in Santa Barbara for the last five years. And, well, there's two things. One, there's this composting incinerator landfill recycling thing, I guess that was just built, that got a big write-up in the Independent, and it turns out that Germany has like 9,000 of them. And it was like in the 90s, I was hearing about how trash was being exported from New York or whatever, and it's like, oh, America, the leading country of the world, you know, maybe we could have a couple of these just for, you know, whatever practicality they are or aren't there, it's just like we're in a new millennium, we're, you know, the world leader in various things, but we're a little bit behind on green stuff, and like I said, you know, Germany and their, their things. And I'm in this situation that brought me to Solvang, which was a big deal that I need to discuss because, because of my situation, all of my things get shut down if, if things don't go my way. I was at the Chinese consulate in LA, I was telling one of your members here, I resolved a border conflict issue between India and China, and they mailed seat through Taiwan Shipping Company, and I'm here, I, I saw the mayor of your town, before he was the mayor, I had a face-to-face interaction with him while I was in Santa Barbara, and it's going to be very interesting to find out how much of my personal situation he does or doesn't know, because I'm kind of blacklisted in the music industry, it could be maybe non-disclosure agreements, but I, I brought that up because it seems like it doesn't really matter what the cause is, you know, who isn't to blame, or what we can or can't do to resolve what's already going on, but you know, maybe we could do something like at least get some water to help, something. And you know, maybe because of my circumstances, I can get some political pull, maybe some grants, I don't know, in the future, but I just at least wanted to put that out here right now, that I'm, I just came to town, and hopefully I'll be able to work with the city in resolving a variety of issues. Thank you for letting me speak.
That's the only speaker slip I have for this section. Does anybody else wish to speak? Either in person, anybody online? Doesn't look like it. Moving on to the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to make any changes or? Does anybody in the public care to comment on the consent agenda? No?
I move approval of the consent agenda of the minutes from July 5th. And the planning building division current projects.
I'll second it.
Moved in, seconded all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass this by home. Any ex parte communications that you would like to disclose? Okay, and let's move on to the public hearing. Could we have the staff report on?
And if I could just interrupt, I just have a conflict of interest with the, the item number one, the Lucca Italian market, I'm just too close with my building, so I will leave the room.
Good evening. Good evening, Lori Tamora, planning consultant. Here tonight to present the first time around the agenda for Mr. at St. George. This is the proposed remodel and renovation and expansion of the old bank building on 1714 Mission Drive. This project has been reviewed by the design review committee twice. They did recommend approval at their last meeting. The project, I'm just going to go through some exhibits for the PowerPoint presentation, just to orient you on what is happening with the project. What we have before you is the areas within the bank building that will be renovated. These are the areas of the, around the building, as well as within the parking lot that will be demoed, and will involve a number of new improvements. As you can see with this illustration, this is the end result of the project. What they'll be doing is redoing the drive-through for the bank, will now be expanded part of their building, and, which would be the market, and then there'll be an area where they'll have the bathrooms, and then some open space in the back. And at the south side, where the actual main portage culture drive-through facility was, that will be torn down, and a new restaurant will be, seating area will be in place there. On the east side, the building will be expanded out towards the pavement, and again, some more seating area, and they'll have a courtyard for outdoors eating also. The parking lot will be restructured with more landscaping and a circular drive-through area with parallel parking, not parallel, but 90-degree parking instead of diagonal, which is currently how it's laid out. Next item. So this gives you a comparison of the floor plan of what was previously there, which was the bank, the drive-through, and then the main area where the bank deposits would be in. That's all coming out, and you can see the new restaurant seating area, the, the market, deli counter area, and then the outside seating, and the kitchen for the restaurant. So that gives you a good orientation on what's transpiring with the building. This is the illustration of the exterior of the buildings, the one in the lower left-hand corner is the one facing the Mission Drive, and the carport facility has been closed off and is part of a structure now. And then you can see throughout the east and west long frontages pretty much mirror the existing architecture of the building. And then the rear has, is where the, on the lower right-hand corner is where the restaurant seating area would be. So there's open windows in that area. So the recommendation is for approval of the development plan for the Market Deli and Restaurant at the 1714 Mission Drive, and we're here today to answer any questions. I do want to respond to one comment that was made earlier in regards to traffic analysis for this site. We did receive a traffic study for the project, and the number of elements or improvements that were made to the project in order to address traffic at the corner, particularly of Mission and Alasol. The first one is the elimination of the drive-through facility at closest to the intersection of Mission and Alasol. That will be reconstructed, and they will be putting in the City of Solvang brick patterns in the sidewalk to provide for the continuity of the sidewalks in that area. The driveway that is further to the east will be, oops, I'm sorry. The driveway further to the east will be a one-way in, right turn into the property, and there, there will be no left turn out of that driveway. It'll circulate through, through to the other side, and there will be a right turn in and a left turn out at the furthest driveway away from the intersection. So that will be the maneuvers for the property, and that was part of the traffic analysis and was incorporated into the project design. So that was, that's basically the review of the project for environmental review. This is an infill project, it's a renovation of an existing site, and there were no further impacts identified for the project. So we're here today to answer any questions that you may have.
Can we see the traffic study?
Yes, you can. I, I apologize that that was not provided to you initially, and we can get that to you, we can forward that on to you.
Okay, has Caltrans approved the left turn?
Yes, they did review the project.
No, that wasn't the question. Did they approve the left-hand turn out of the project?
Yes.
Okay.
And just to be clear, that left-hand turn is from the easternmost driveway?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I have a question. If I can start, thank you. The parking lot, I couldn't see the spacing, because now it's going to be, I forget, it's front-loaded or side-to-side, but the, the parking stalls, they're not, they used to be angled parking stalls in the lot.
Correct.
Can you pull up that map one more time? And on the, the printout that we have, it's hard to read, but what is the, the spacing of the width between the stalls from end of stall and end of stall on that, on that exit drive aisle where most of the parking is?
In this area right here?
Yeah.
This is over 60 feet in length?
No, no, but the drive aisle itself, there's, it says 26.6 or 20, is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay, I guess it's still pretty tight, I'm wondering if angled parking stalls might be just better, because it is, you know, it's uncomfortable backing out, or if someone has a big truck with a tow hitch or something, sometimes it makes it hard to back out of there, so.
Well, the 26.6 is the city standard for two-way drive aisles.
Yeah.
And we can definitely talk to the applicant about reconsidering doing a diagonal, but it does meet the city standard.
Okay, so it's the minimum?
It is, it is pretty much a standard parking lot.
Yeah, okay. And the existing, the other question I have, you can pull up the map one more time. The apron coming in from the street, it looks like that lot next door is expanding, if I'm not mistaken? Because I see the apron up at the top where it says Mission Drive.
Correct.
That was, that was the old drive thru.
Right there, correct.
Now, the lot next door is going to be?
No. That is the property line on the, the left-hand side of where you see that Mission Drive. That, that's the property line between the other parcel and this. What they're doing is they're adding landscaping along there, they're not building right up to the property line. So in some of those areas where you see shrubbery, that's where they're going to put some landscaping just to screen that wall. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, I see the apron, and the building looks like it stops right there, and then now that apron just goes into what? It's a dirt lot right now.
That apr- oh, you're talking about the next apron.
Yeah, is that one existing? I just don't remember.
The western boundary you're talking about.
Yeah, closer to Alasol.
Right.
There's an apron there right now?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
That was where the old gas station was.
Okay, perfect, okay, that's, that's, I was confused about that.
Right. And that, that is maybe another project coming before you here in the future?
Yeah, kind of word, but yeah, thank you.
But at this point, this is a standalone project, so one of the things that the DRC was really looking at was how is it going to look from Alasol if there was nothing to shield it? So we actually went back to DRC on another meeting to look at the elevations along the west-facing side of the building, so that if nothing ever was built on that last piece, there would at least be a finished look to this particular building, and that's what the redesign of the project added for, as you can see in the first one, some additional space for landscaping along that wall.
That's all the questions I have, thank you.
Any questions? Just one question. I thought we had to make a finding on the wall on the south side that's supposed to be, I think, four feet tall?
Yeah.
But it's actually, tapers down to two feet or something at, at the end?
Is that the wall that divides from the back parking lot?
From the parking lot to the parking lot, yeah. You didn't mention that.
Yeah, I apologize.
That's a finding we have, have to make.
Yeah, that'd be, thank you very much for reminding me of that. Yes, the parking standards and design of parking lots require either five feet of landscaping up against a adjacent property owner or a four-foot wall. And as you know, the wall that currently exists there is between the bank and the city parking lot, and it's, it serves a purpose, it, there's no other buildings in that area, and so we're recommending a modification of having to add to that wall or build a parallel wall between the city parking lot and this. So the two-and-a-half to three-foot high wall that currently exists there serves its purpose.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I thought, you just didn't, are there any other modifications that we're making findings on that?
No.
We missed?
They, they meet their, their landscaping and their parking requirements, height requirements setbacks, so for the purposes of this project, transition from a bank to multiple uses, it meets the requirements.
Okay. Well, if there's no more questions on the report, we'll take it out for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item?
I just, I'm not a design architect, but I did question.
State your name again, please.
Michael Allen Miller. That individual mentioned something about the 90-degree getting in and out with trucks, and I'm wondering how many parking slots would they lose if they went to a diagonal thing, and maybe why they decided to design it that way instead of something more convenient to get in and out? I mean, would they really be utilizing that many spaces if it was that difficult to get in and out? I just wanted to put that out there, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Anybody online? I think I see a hand up. Ms. Benedict. We, we can't hear you if you're speaking.
Is she on the phone?
There you are. We can't hear you. Do you have your mute on?
This is Deanna Bradford, can you speak?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I can hear Sheila on my end in my own zone, so if the operator could check. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, well, sounds like a commercial.
Yeah.
But, did you hear, I worked at the Mission for 18 years?
No.
No.
Okay, well, I worked as the archivist, and at the beginning I was the administrator there. I'm familiar with the corner lot. It's my understanding from the people I know in, at the Mission and at the Archdiocese, that that is a lease piece of property, the corner lot. It's a 30-year lease with a 30-year renewal, is that correct?
That's what the applicant has relayed to us, yes.
Okay, and also the Union Bank Building was owned by a Chinese company, is that still on a lease, or did they sell it to Mr. St. George?
Mr. St. George has indicated to us that he's in a 30-year lease also for the bank building.
Okay, so neither one of them is in his name. And does anybody ever look at the corner lot to see if the gas tanks are still under the ground? That used to be a gas station on that corner. That's the first thing. The second thing is, when I was working at the Mission, there was a beautiful building being proposed for that corner lot, and Caltrans shot it down enough that the people lost their funding, because they did not want any traffic coming onto 246, and pretty much Caltrans is the law when it comes to 246. And I hesitate to see what would happen in it with a restaurant going out on Alasol. Our traffic problems are horrendous in that area, and with the prospect of Mr. St. George building on the old mill property, and now this, fortunately for us that live here, we know how to go around the backside and come in another way, but for the average person, it's stop and go. And I really think that this project needs to be looked at again, looked at very hard and long before you make a decision to approve it and turn it over to city council. And I guarantee I will be talking to city council. I think by three minutes or probably up.
Thank you, Sheila. Anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Just to address Ms. Benedict's comments, she was talking about the lot at the corner of Alasol and 246, that's not what's on the agenda tonight.
Correct.
It's the next lot over where the Union Bank Building is. And as I understand from your comments, that Caltrans has approved the, the left turn into the, the far driveway? And a right turn only into the near driveway, so those issues have been addressed. Am I correct on that?
Correct. And if I may, may just add one other comment, and I apologize it wasn't part of the presentation. When this project went to the DRC, they reviewed the architecture, the layout, parking lot, but there was a deferral of several items that they wanted to bring back to the DRC, one of them being signs, the other being lighting, and the last one would be, was, the applicant proposed three flag poles up front? And the DRC questioned the appropriateness of three flag poles, they questioned even two, but they'd like to see those back. So there's a condition of approval that the DRC reviewed the additional items for this project.
Okay, well, as, as I recall, the requirement in the ordinance is not more than two flags. Okay, so anybody have any comments that they want to make on this? Julie?
Yep.
Justin?
I do have a quick question, since we were talking about parking, we were talking about making the right-hand turn into the lot and a left-hand turn into the lot. Was there feedback from Caltrans on the, on, on the exit? Can you make a left-hand turn out of the, or is there a right-hand turn only?
The, traffic study indicated a left turn out from that far driveway.
So somebody can make a left-hand turn going westbound?
Correct.
From that?
There's a, if you drive through, there's, it's, it's a turn lane that goes all the way from the Mission, so there's, there's actually a lane that's used for turning left either into the one side or the other, so you can make that left turn.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. So ahead?
Well, I have a couple of questions. I'm wondering, who is the tenant of record on this? I, I was looking through the, the various documents, and on page 12, the applicant is at St. George, listed as the tenant. But on page 16, it says a LLC, SBID LLC is the tenant. On page 38, it says SBID LLC perens at St. George is the tenant. But I checked, looked into SBID to see what it was, and I could not find at St. George listed as an officer or having anything to do with that LLC. So my question on this is, who is going to be the tenant? Is it going to be SBID LLC, or is it going to be at St. George? Or is he somehow an owner of SBID that doesn't show up in the official records? What's, what's going on?
My understanding is that SDIC, SBIC is the landowner, and at St. George is the, ought to be the tenant for the property.
No, the, the owner is a, a company out of Honolulu, the Mings, and they're leasing that property apparently to at St. George, or is it to SBID? And that's my confusion.
I don't have an answer for that one.
Anyway.
At St. George is the applicant that has brought forward this project?
Right.
And so?
It's probably something that we ought to at least make sure that all the documents are consistent in what it says.
Okay, we'll talk about that.
At such time as the applicant would have to sign the acceptance of conditions, then that would have, the authority to accept the conditions would have to be verified.
Okay. Okay, then a couple other things. On page 42, it talks about the planning commission being able to mandate bicycle parking. I'm wondering, is that something we should consider? Anybody? I mean, one of the things they're trying to do is encourage the use of bicycles more in town and what have you. I think if there were some, at least minimal bicycle parking on the, the property, it, it might be appropriate. And, you know, if, if we mandated, it would have to be, as it says, reviewed by the DRC. Anybody agree with me, disagree? You don't care?
I think that's a great idea, I think it's a great idea.
For all the things that we're trying to do and trying to be, it is a very good idea. I would, I would, I would support the use of bike racks, or the mandate of bike racks, which is, which is not, which doesn't, which doesn't seem like a huge ask anyway. Either, I mean, people ride their bikes in the parking, where, you know, lean up against the wall or something out of the corner.
Right, yeah, and it doesn't have to be, I mean, it could just be a rack, it doesn't have to have locks and tire pumps and what have you like they've got in San Luis Obispo, just a place to store your bike while you go to the market or to the deli. So do we need to take a vote on that?
You can add that as direction to staff to include that in the application, or in the building application when they bring it forward to designate bike parking in strategic locations. building, um, application when they bring it forward to designate bike parking in, um, strategic locations.
So, so. Keep forgetting. Subject to the review of the DRC, we could put that as a condition of, a condition of approval.
Right. Uh, and the, the next thing I had was on noise, uh, item B eight. We, uh, changed some wording in there. And the first question I had, this is on page fourteen and page fifty. Uh, it's in both places. Uh, it says, uh, sixty dB and then in parentheses, six. Is it going to be six or sixty?
It's sixty, sixty dB is what it should be.
So it says to be percent per en sixty?
Correct.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought.
Yeah.
And then, I, I read through that and, and I don't understand, really don't understand why it's even there. Uh, because you go to the trouble of defining, uh, national standards and uh, type one and type two noise and within a hundred feet. And then in the final paragraph, you say, well, you don't have to measure it. You don't have to use a meter. So my question is, uh, who's going to enforce this? Uh, is this only during construction or is this something that's going to carry over to when the business is open? And just to point out that it, that there are, I got counted today. There are thirty apps available in the App Store for iPhone for, uh, measuring, uh, noise and sound. So, uh, so I don't understand what's going on. It seems like we're mandating it in one area and then in the last sentence, we say, well, we're not going to do anything about it.
N- n- no, that's, that's not the intent of the sentence. The sentence, the, the enforcement sentence is, um, in the condition so that a code enforcement officer or even a law enforcement officer who happens to be called to the property to, um, respond to a noise complaint doesn't have to take a noise meter with them. So there are apps and there are other ways to measure noise without a noise meter. This sentence is intended, if we have to go to court, to say to a judge, no, a noise meter wasn't required, Judge. The, the condition doesn't require that. That's, that's the reason that sentence is in there.
So it'll be up to whoever the responding person is to listen to it and say, yeah, it's loud, yeah, it's not?
Or, or you, or you use, as you mentioned, one of the apps that are commonly used by code enforcement officers to measure noise.
But isn't the way this is worded requiring a, a meter that meets this standard?
The, the wording of the standard is intend, is intended to, um, provide a measurement uh, by which that condition is enforced. Those apps, for example, use the same standard. The engineers use the same standard. So there's a, there's a, there's a number and a standard. What we're saying in the next sentence is you don't necessarily have to have a noise meter with you to enforce the standard.
Okay, and it's completely complaint-driven. Uh, there's not going to be any monitoring of?
When, during construction, uh, the timing is what's most important. Be, start construction, you know, you don't start before seven-thirty, you don't, you end after five-thirty. That's during the normal daily operations. If there's noise louder than that, and it would be complaint-driven. And, uh, so we have the ability to go out and measure at that point. But the biggest, um, operational issue that we deal with is when construction is happening outside of those construction hours and people, you know, the, things become quieter and when construction's happening in the evenings or early morning, we will hear about it. And that's what we usually go out and talk with, um, contractors about staying within the hours of operation.
It's mostly interior work anyway, though. It's not, I mean, besides that breezeway getting closed off, I can't imagine it's going to be really loud. And it's in a pretty busy, noisy part of town anyway with that intersection at Alice Hill. Can't imagine it being any excessive.
And so the second part of it, this applies only during construction?
Correct. Now, I could say, I will add to that. Uh, we do have, uh, right now, the city of Selvank has an outdoor noise ordinance. And you need to have a conditional use permit if you're going to have outdoor noise and, and go through and, and, uh, the process to get approval for a conditional use permit because we have had complaints about outdoor music. And so this provision could apply if that was, um, the case.
Yeah, okay. That, that was all I had on this item. So, any other discussion? Anybody want to make a motion?
So I would like to make, well, I'd like to make a suggestion because I do feel somewhat at a disadvantage to you because you don't have the traffic study. And, uh, because it was provided for the public, for the record. And if you'd like to, um, have the traffic study and review it, the app, you could continue this item for a month and we will get you the traffic study so you have it. I, I understand that that is.
I, I don't, I don't want to delay the ten, or the, I don't think it's, for me, it's not necessary.
She's satisfied my questions with stating, stating what was on that study.
So, and I kind of feel the same. How about you, Joni?
Will you at least send it to us?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, we'll take a vote. Somebody want to make a motion to approve or disapprove or?
I, I'll make a motion to approve the, um, what's the proper wording for this La Luca Italian Market Deli project?
Motion to adopt resolution twenty-two dash oh seven.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to adopt, um, what is it, twenty-two dash oh seven? Per city staff recommendations and, uh, bicycle parking rank.
I'll second that.
Moved to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes four oh, one absent. Okay. He doesn't get to speak, right? Uh, okay, moving on to item five B. Could we have the staff report, please? Excuse me.
He's coming. The blueprint's in hand.
Okay, welcome back.
Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is a request from Bella Vista, San Yves Valley LLC, uh, Gary Blake and Brian Nelson as the architect, uh, to review conditions of approval of TPM three, um, thirty oh six two in regarding to guest parking on, on the three lots at the end of Laurel Avenue. Uh, these three lots were created back in two thousand and three. Uh, the map was recorded, creating, um, the three vacant lots plus the one, uh, lot with an existing house on it. When the map recorded, there were a number of conditions imposed that they met, including uh, establishing, uh, the sewer line, water line, hookups, the basin, and, um, working through a number of the other re, map recommendation conditions. Uh, there were also a series of conditions that were involved with the actual future construction of the homes on these three lots. That involved, uh, going to the previously Board of Architecture Review, now Design Review Committee, um, to look at a number of different things, including, um, the design of the homes, colors, materials, landscaping, lighting. And, uh, there was one very important condition that the property only, uh, the roof heights of the buildings were only at the five seventy-five level. So I'm going to go through a couple of, um, exhibits here for the project, uh, just to orient you. Uh, this is a picture of, oops, let me bring that back up. Uh, this is the cul-de-sac at the end of Laurel. Uh, there's a couple of houses at the end and then a driveway that moves off of that to the back end here where the existing house is located. And then there's the three lots fan off of this driveway. At the end of the driveway is, uh, a hammerhead, which is a turnaround area for the fire department, which, uh, needs to remain open at all times. Uh, this is just a different orientation of the lots, um, existing home, the driveway with the hammerhead, and then the three lots as, um, have been reviewed by the Design Review Committee. Uh, several features of the lots, uh, as, uh, they've been going through the process. One of them is they each have a building envelope, um, which is the dash lines, as you can see, around each one of the homes. Uh, the fire department did require that, uh, each one of them have access around the building. So you can see stairwells going down the hillside, so the fire department could get down the slope. Uh, and the important element of this project is that there's about a thirty-foot to forty-foot grade differential from the drive or from that private road down to the bottom of the hill. So it is, um, quite steep. So, uh, what ended up as the design of these projects is, um, stepped design with, um, caissons as their footings. The, um, front of the building will have, um, fill for the driveway, getting into the garage. And you see basically a three-story element, um, from the back of the building. So one story in the front, again, a flat roof, um, holding the, um, five seventy-five elevation, and then, um, the, um, home steps down from there. That's, this is one of the homes, lot two, with its driveway, garage, element, um, architectural feature and the flat roof. And this is how it looks as it steps down, uh, the hillside. This is the back of the homes, or, uh, pretty much, uh, mirrors the homes for each one of them. And, uh, so the issue is that there is one condition on the project that talks about providing guest parking. And so we're going to go through what currently, uh, is provided on the site. Each one of these lots has a two-car garage and each one of the, in front of each garage is, uh, twenty feet. So there's room for two additional cars to park in front of the, um, garage door. And then each one of these have a larger pad for a guest parking space. Uh, lots one and three, they're, the guest parking would come in along, um, sort of parallel to the house. Uh, lot two would be adjacent to the cars that were already parked in, in the driveway. Uh, again, these are, um, filled slopes that provide the, um, parking area. The issue is that the original condition of approval said, um, one guest parking shall be shown on the construction site for each parcel and marked as a guest parking space. That's what they've done. However, the guest parking space may not be located in the front or side yard setback and shall be provided prior to issuance of occupancy clearance. The problem is, that's the problem. And so we're here, after looking at many options on how to provide guest parking space outside of the front or side yard setbacks. Uh, you basically would be building a road down the hill, uh, to get to any parking in the rear of the property or establishing more cantilevered building out the back of these buildings to provide parking. So in consideration of, uh, the, the accomplishments that they've made in meeting, uh, not only the two required parking spaces, but also the expanded driveway and then also the guest parking, we're asking that that condition for, um, not being allowed in the front yard setback be ti, removed.
Thank you. Any questions before we go to comment?
I apologize. The, um, the condition of approval that were approved originally, what page is it that says it can't be in the front? I was flipping through.
Uh, it is, I'm sorry, I don't have my full package here.
Sixty, thank you. Oh, wait.
I mean, I'm like. Set of conditions.
On our sixty.
Uh, it would be on page two. You have several sets of the original conditions of approval for this project and the condition is.
Eighty-nine, maybe?
It's printed there, but I wanted to get to the real, original statement. So it's on page sixty on the top is the cut paste of that particular condition, but in the.
Page eighty-nine, I think.
Eighty-nine, thank you.
But I'm not sure that's applicable because what's on page eighty-nine is not the same as what you have in your, uh, briefing.
Is it page eighty-nine fourteen? Is that what you're referencing?
Yeah, that's the only one I saw. I, I just, but it must say somewhere that it can't be in the front and the side somewhere.
Okay, so it would be on page, there were two sets of conditions here and here because they went through, I'm sorry. There was two sets of conditions because the original project was approved and then it was modified. So on page ninety-eight, on a number fourteen is the condition that we're working with.
So that's the proposed change condition?
That is the wording that is, was approved and we're asking to delete the last sentence.
So I'm, I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, so the, I think what we did is we, we edited this version without the old wording in it.
To say that it could be in the front yard setback.
Correct, correct.
And I was just looking for somewhere where it said it can't be in the front yard setback and I'm sure it's there's.
And that's what you would see on page sixty. On page sixty, at the top of the page was the cut, was the actual, um, wording of fourteen before this was edited.
Okay, so last question. So again, it, it said it can't be in the front and side yard. The applicant is asking to say, we will stay out of the side yard, but we'd like the guest parking to be allowed in the front yard setback.
Correct.
And that's what is on page?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, and that's why when I'm reading it, I'm like, what's the issue? It says it. But that is the change that they're asking for. That makes.
We should have done a strikeout on that.
Yep, makes sense. Thank you.
Why was it done before? They said they couldn't. Is this just a standard for the city that you can't have it?
I, I, I don't understand why that condition was in there to begin with. Uh, so I can't.
Okay, well, let's go to public comment and then we can bring it back. So I have one speaker slip on this item. Bobby and Chris Brown.
Hello, I'm Bobby Brown and this is my husband, Chris Brown. And we live at eighteen sixty-one Laurel, so that's what drew us here tonight was curiosity about this project and if it truly will happen, is it, is it going to happen? Because we've lived, uh, where we are for ten years and, you know, n- nothing so far. And, uh, so just my view on it is that the additional parking space would be welcome. And so just my view on it is that the additional parking space would be welcome because I think it would keep people off of the cul-de-sac, which is where our area is, where our house is facing. And so I don't know if you know, you know, if, if it is going to be built, if the homes are going to be built or not. But so I'm assuming what you're talking about is whether it's approved? Can you answer that or is that a dumb question?
What we're addressing tonight is allowing a parking space in the front, but not in the back or the side.
Okay.
And so we're not addressing whether construction is going to go ahead or it's going to happen or not, but it's a good question.
Okay, yeah. So we're for the parking space.
Yeah.
Did you want to say anything?
That's all, I, you know, I had another one that which isn't as germane and I'm not sure if it fits here, but is, will those homes be approved for short-term rentals at all? Does anybody have any information on that?
I didn't see anything in the plans or to do that.
Yeah, that, I would just hope not because the, the other home that's back there that Hector owns now is...
Hugo.
Or Hugo. It's, it's a beautiful home, but prior to him owning it, somebody had used it for short-term rental. And I have to say, it's, it's not palatable. So, so that's it. That's all. I welcome more parking for the units themselves.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
We'll discuss it. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this item? Nobody here, nobody online, so we'll bring it back. Laurie, can you address the?
Sure. The city ordinance only allows for short-term rentals in the TRC zone. They're not allowed in the multifamily or single-family zoning. So if we hear about it, they try to, some try to do it, it'll become a zoning violation and we'll pursue it. So I hope that answered your question.
And I was going to have the same question. Are they actually, are they actually planning to move ahead with this? I mean, it's been 18 years.
We have been in the process of going through plan check on these homes. They've gone through the design review committee process. They're here tonight to resolve a condition issue. So at this point, they're doing everything that indicates that they're going to build.
Good, just, I was curious. Okay, so we'll bring it back from public comment. Any other question, questions?
I'd just like to say that I think it's cool that neighbors came out and said their piece. And I think it makes sense to have that extra parking spot right there and, you know, getting people who live in the area their blessing and saying, "Hey, it's taking parking off the street and putting on the property makes sense." So I, I think it's good. Thanks for coming out.
This takes me back to Mill Valley where we built a house on very similar property like this. And it's, it's an adventure. It's an adventure. And you just have to have a very good engineer.
The only thing I, the comment is, I was probably on planning commission at the time that we approved this because Shelley Stahl was the planning director at the time and I've been on it for so long. And the reason that there was requirement, which no one seems opposed to including the applicant, of having front yard parking is that it's only a 20-foot wide street with fire apparatus, an east and a west, cars coming if you park. Lots of four lot subdivisions on Old Mill Road. It's a fire lane only and you can't park in the street and so therefore you have your guest parking. So I think it probably supports exactly 18 years ago, which you're stating today, which is, we don't want a cul-de-sac, we don't want cars parked in the lane. It seems like the applicant's happy to, to make that work. So it seems that, seems like everyone's on the same page. So I have nothing else to, to say. But I think that's what, what probably prompted it at the time.
Scott, do you have anything?
I don't, I'm ready.
Can we get a motion to approve or disapprove? Anybody?
Sure, move approval. But I got to find...
2208.
2208. To amend the tenant parcel map, condition of approval B14, to allow one guest parking within the front yard setback of this development.
I'll second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Okay, let's move on to item 5C. Could we have staff report, please?
And I have to leave again. Last time I voted on it, I'll just make a record, I'm in the minutes of having approved it because there was three of us that were conflicted. Obviously, these two gentlemen don't have a conflict any longer and I still do. So I will head outside.
The item before you is for the Attardag Inn time extension. The project was approved in 2019 and for a number of reasons, probably including COVID, they have not moved forward with this project. They are asking for a one-year time extension, which is allowed by the ordinance, to consider whether they'll be moving forward with the project. Just a reminder, I can go through the site. This property is located right at the end of Attardag as you take the knuckle into the alleyway. There is an existing hotel already there. If the planning commission will remember about a year ago, there was a request to do a bocce ball courts on this particular little vacant lot. And that application has not moved forward. So the site plan shows here how they were going to take the driveway off of Attardag to some underground parking. And this is what the building would look like as you faced Attardag with the driveways into the building. And this would be the southern elevation that would be looking into Attardag Square or courtyard area. So at this point, the hotel was for 26 additional units and they just have not moved forward with the application and are requesting the one-year time extension. And I think this is the first time extension we've brought forward to you since this last year.
I'm sure there's all sorts of reasons that they want the extension to do it. Do they list any?
Well, COVID was one of them.
Sure.
I'm, you know, I'm fine with them extending.
Go to public comment. Anybody in the, here want to speak? Anybody? There's nobody online. Lysina wants to speak. Okay, seen none, we'll bring it back. Any discussion? I just have one question. Has anything happened on this project at all? Like, you know, one of the things that they're doing is merging two lots. Has that merger happened? I mean, something might have happened.
Yeah, they, they did work through the merger process. Again, I think they started doing that just as I came on board and completed the merger. And then that's about the time COVID hit. And so we have not had any applications for building permits yet. And hopefully over the course of this next year, they'll pursue the project.
Well, I think this is a pretty good project. I did originally as well, even though I couldn't vote on it. So if nobody has any comments, can I get a motion to approve a one-year extension?
I'll make a motion to approve the extension for resolution 22-09.
I'll second it.
Move it in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 4-0, one absent. So do we have any discussion items tonight? Is there anything anybody like to bring up?
I just have a question and nobody seems to know the answer. I've asked a lot of people. There were olive trees planted that the city bought for the mission to plant and to take care of on the corner of 246 and Allison. One day I drove by and the trees were gone. What happened to them? Because they weren't, where did they go? And who decided it was okay for them to go since the mission and the city was involved in their upkeep and their purchase?
Well, I'll back it up even more. We had a ordinance, or we had one, I don't know if we still do, but it was when all the gas stations were getting removed. If you removed a gas station, you couldn't just leave it fenced up with orange, you had to landscape it, make it look good. So the mission removed. And I, I'm answering a question that a speaker had asked, but I don't know if it, I assume it all met code. So all that got removed, they planted it and they planted the olive trees, whether the city bought it or the mission did because they owned it and landscaped and kept it nice. And you're right, and then at some point, six months ago, they were just all gone and that corner looks a little blighted just because it's under development or is that development not happening? So that, that was kind of the history. I mean, members in the ordinance that all the gas stations like had to do it. And something happened. Looks better than terrible, but yeah, I don't have an answer what happened.
It needs to be cleaned up if nothing else. But I would like to know what happened to the olive trees. Did they take them out and transplant them? Because olive trees do transplant pretty well. Or did they just ace them?
We'll find out for you.
Okay, thank you.
Any staff comments?
Yeah, thank you. So far, our plan for next meeting, which is in September this year, is going by very fast, is the Southern Senior Center. Will, if everything, we think we'll be able to bring that one forward. That's the only item we have so far scheduled for the September meeting. And they'll be going to the design review committee this month. We'll work out all the final architectural details with the DRC and then bring it forward to the meeting.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have one question about the...
I thought it was on, sorry. About the lumberyard project. I know the DRC recently reviewed a new concept. Are we going to get to see that at some point or what is the plan for that?
I'll work with Zina to see if, we'll bring it forward in the near future to you. One of the things that we're working on is having the zoning change in regards to the property be incorporated into the general plan update so that it doesn't need to be processed as a separate general plan change concurrently with what's already happening in the city. So the current zoning designation is DR 20, which does not allow a hotel. The TRC zoning district, which would become the base designation, does allow for residential on there. So we could ultimately have a hotel with the 35 micro units on the site and accomplish all of the goals that Mr. St. George would like to accomplish there.
So on that same note, on the sheet that we were given today, it says that there's a seven-unit hotel and 45 micro unit apartments. Is that the same project? The project description says seven-unit hotel and a 45 micro unit apartment.
It should say 75 unit hotel.
Okay, so let me tell us a little. Thank you.
Good catch.
And if I could, can we make just a comment at this time? Something that's not on the agenda, but just a general comment about things? That's okay. So the issue I have, and it's come up before from the design review committee, and I think we ought to have some direction from staff and maybe design review ought to look at it. We have these designs that we're going to do Northern European architecture in the core of the city or in the TRC, if you will. And then if it's not in the TRC, then all of a sudden, perhaps we don't have to. And in fact, it is discouraged to have Northern European, which I completely agree with, when it is perhaps over on this, the lumberyard property outside of town, heading down out of town. But when something is so close to the TRC, in fact, bordering the TRC, perhaps the DRC needs to really emphasize a Northern European look. My example is Copenhagen Street from Fifth Street down to Fourth Place where it was TRC. We rezoned it only for housing allocation, but overlaid that you can do vacation rentals. So if it's, if we're going to have an overlay of vacation rentals, which is a TRC only, but then it doesn't fall into another European because it's not in the TRC, but then we basically make it the TRC, I'd really like to make sure that the DRC, because I may have an issue with that architecture not being appropriate for what I would think is a TRC. The zone of outside of leaving town, I get, but in the heart of town, across from TRC, which was TRC and we're going to treat it like TRC, might need to be looked at from a DRC standard of TRC. And in fact, the two new buildings that have gone up, the fourplex and the other, look pretty darn good as Northern European. So I don't know what other projects are coming. Something's going to come, but I just think it's a fallacy to say, "Oh, it's not in the TRC, we never have to look at Northern European." And it can be Middle Eastern or it can be Northwestern or it can be whatever we want. That's just a comment I'm making in general that I'm going to probably have an issue with the next time we go around, especially when we're allowing TRC development in a residential zone.
Okay, I'm confused. What are we talk, what are you specifically talking about?
Copenhagen Street between Fifth Street and Fourth Place. All that residential that we rezoned from TRC into residential multifamily. And but yet we did an overlay saying, "In that zone, we'll allow you to have vacation rentals," which is great. I'm all in favor of that. But we need to really look at that and not just say, "Oh, you've got hotels and Olsons and all these stuff right across the street and Delandsby and all this other." And then right there, "Oh, it's not TRC, so therefore we can't do Northern European. It's not our preview." But when it comes to us on a development plan, I'm just saying, I'm going to take some issues with it if we're going to allow them to do TRC development, which we are by definition. So I think that slipped through the cracks is, is my point.
Well, I, I don't know necessarily if it slipped through the cracks because I think the process lent itself to accomplishing what you're saying with the one four-unit vacation rental that is going up right now. It did, it did go through both the DRC and the planning commission and it does have Danish architecture.
No, I, I didn't mean to say that. Both of those developments look great. Because the DRC or the developer did that and said, "Let's just go Northern European." And, and I'd like to see that continued. That's just my emphasis.
And, and I appreciate that direction and I think that's, we'll be able to emphasize that through the general plan update and the design element to make sure that Copenhagen carries on that theme all the way to Fifth. Because you're right, it's sort of in a, yeah.
I disagree with you on one thing. I think we should carry the Northern European outside anywhere touches the city, even Old Mill, what the houses are. It's the character, we have to maintain it.
It's interesting to say that because when we did Nyborg at the end of town on the west, all those along the edge had to be Skip Mesa, all those on the edge. Down there where William T. Sharp lived behind the banks, all those along the edge had to be. And then the next development went on Old Mission, "Oh, it's outside, we don't have to." And I'm not criticizing anybody for it, but we were kind of doing a feathering and it just kind of stopped. And I get with, with Mr. St. George's property next to the Mission and, and Memorial Hall. I totally get what, where he's going from and that sounds fine to me. But I'd hate to see that Copenhagen Drive extension to Fifth, especially when we're letting TRC be on a residential, not meet that. So I'm, I'm with you also.
There, there are three vacant lots or there's three lots that have the potential for future development. And so we'll keep an eye out for them and they will be coming both to the DRC and the planning commission at some point.
Commissioner, if I can just jump in here for a second, Zina Radford, team manager, just want to say that, yes, the general plan update contractors are currently tracking the DRC element, which was based on a discussion of special section, section that DRC held. I think this subject matter is definitely something that wasn't specifically discussed. So it's really great to hear those comments. I definitely agree that that makes sense. I would say that the way that the consultants are currently tracking the requirements, but not in European... in the requirements for Northern European is going to be more tied to the village area versus to the TRC. So that, for example, the old bomber yard project, which is now being set up to be in TRC, doesn't necessarily have to be tied to the Northern European element and can be of the mission style. So that's the precedent going forward. The G-PAC will be reviewing that element. And Commissioner Peterson will be available, will be able to review it as part of the G-PAC, at which point playgrounds will be coming through the planning commission. And then the city council for preliminary review and it will be available to public review. And then we'll be coming back to find all the goal. So those are great comments to have.
Okay, thank, thank you, Zina. Anything else? Then I guess we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.